We'll call the, uh, what day is it? January nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, Wayne County Commission meeting to order. That's where you call.
Karen.
Here.
Morning.
Here.
Well.
Here.
David.
Here.
We have a forum, we will continue, uh, with Secretary of Department.
I pledge allegiance to the body of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States, on the ground, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Uh, let's start with the consent agenda.
Does Chairman want to move to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Hey, do you have a motion, is there a second?
Yes.
Any additional discussion? It's your time, that's roll call vote.
Barry.
Yes.
Corey.
Yes.
Steve.
Yes.
Well.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Okay, motion back. All right. Communication. You ready, Liddy, or you wanna wait?
There's nothing blue there.
Yep. They're stacking board, now you're jumping right down and hitting the first thing in the agenda.
Here we go. Um, so as you know, we're in the legislative session that started here earlier this month, and in the last session, we had issued a letter of support for the atmospheric resource board in the state water commission. Uh, they've already had their initial hearing in the house for their budget, but are, um, if we are interested, or the board is interested, in providing another letter of support during the session for their budget, um, just to be speaking authorization to draft that letter and have the chairman sign at the appropriate time for the next hearing, simply stating our support as a cost share assistant for over twenty years. We just renewed again for the next five years, and then also because of the support that they've provided us with the weather radar and continue to with the radar website and distribution of the raw data.
Yeah. What a delicious authority.
Just chairman, I want to make a motion to, uh, have the deputy director of weather and operations chairman, who's been supporting the, uh, federal aviation program.
Do you have a motion, is there a second? Okay, any additional discussion? Here none, that's roll call vote.
Corey.
Yes.
Steve.
Yes.
Well.
Yes.
David.
Here.
Barry.
Yes.
Okay, motion back.
I'm gonna skip over the next item along the agenda that I have, and carry on with my day.
Okay, hey. Thank you, Liddy. Uh, all right, bye now.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, I have before you create a team of fifty-four assistant subgrats agreement for our team on stage that we plan to take back in the future. This agreement on page fourteen, it lists myself as the primary agent, Christopher Fitzgerald as the alternate agent, and if you approve it, I just need the chairman to sign this agreement.
I would make a motion to approve and operate chairman's time.
There's a second. Okay, any additional discussion? Here none, that's roll call vote.
Steve.
Yes.
Well.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Barry.
Yep.
Corey.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, my next item, two weeks, I think, to present that, for the, uh, package. I think those people have had a few, one. So this person, she started in, uh, finance of the staff account, and she handles assets, insurance, um, tax levies, tax wise, and loans, and anything else that was defined by her.
Is that fair enough?
Yeah, sounds like plenty.
My house.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm just gonna send the text message. I'll take a picture of it, send it to the...
Okay, so this is our fifth renewal for commercial insurance. Um, it includes our general liability insurance, our commercial auto, and our M L money. Uh, so far, we've included for all three policies, three hundred seventy-three thousand and a hundred sixty dollars. This is actually a decrease from last year, uh, by about forty-six hundred dollars, which is good. Um, the thing is, will not include is that we've asked Endor for a higher liability limit for our cybersecurity insured policies, uh, compliance, IT, we thought that it would be important to raise that liability limit to five million dollars. So, um, that is not included in this quote, just yet they didn't have the time to get that together, of course, but I don't, I don't have too much more. Um, the other item that, uh, Manger wanted us to be aware of is our current liability limit for our general liability policy is five million dollars. Uh, there's, uh, a schedule in the back of the sheet basically saying what our premium would look like if we wanted to raise that limit, money were, you know, fifteen, six to ten million dollars. Uh, he wanted to let me know that it's a free non-fee for every million dollars, that's about six hundred dollars for a premium. Um, if that is something that the board would like us to consider, uh, that's, that's true, if we're, uh, keepers of that, I'd make aware of that. And, uh, that's pretty much it.
Oh, thank you for having insurance with all, that's very...
Yeah.
Yeah, there's... Uh, question, sir. Do we?
Well, to, uh, what do they recommend as far as those liability limits? Are they recommending us to go up? Because it looks like not really very much money to be able to almost double it, double...
Exactly, he basically said it could be about fifty-six hundred dollars, five million dollars, I believe it was ten million dollars.
But he didn't give a...
He didn't, um, he, we actually gave him, uh, get to pass, basically, we got this about five, well, that's five hundred price, which was like two hundred dollars. And so I did, uh, reach out to him to see if there was, uh, recommendations based on Tommy Hour's life. Um, I haven't done much, too much looking to see if there's no big task or other county, um, uh, there's, there's like, uh, but...
I think it looks awful tricky, is when does it have to be, have to be done with food right now, or is it...
I don't know, yeah, I can, I mean, I need to think of something better I can look more into, and what we've, uh, stated, uh, before anything I can do.
Which one, the chair, stop it?
Steve.
Yes. Stop. No, I was just, Karen, you're in, and it had five million dollars, doesn't seem like an awful lot anymore, how weird is that?
Uh, this is, this is like, uh, that's cute.
Well, do we have time to have you look and see what the other ones there have, and then maybe get a recommendation from him and bring it back for the next meeting, is that, is that okay with, with you guys up here?
And then, I, for the, uh, the meeting, uh, you know, on that line as well.
David. You?
Um, I guess I have a question for Karen, so I mean, Karen, do you know, like, I can't think of anything, when hundreds of years ago, we had that situation, or we had more than, uh, five million dollars, suit to claim, or whatever you wanna call it. But don't get me wrong, I agree, I like the idea of, you know, it's not a lot of money to, to double it, but I guess it's supposed to force the vote, because raising the ten million, that got given, and if that's a subsidy, that went more in service to, to uh, to go in a ten million, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I mean, that would obviously provide more company, but you also remember that really often, like, they have, you know, vector, we, part, so, you know, uh, I don't know if that would, you know, make a difference enough, you know, but, yeah, I mean, so I know I've been in the country, we've never had, to be close to five million, or like, we've been responsible for it, and not with any of the other entities that are, that, you know, quite hardly been necessary, so...
Well, I think we've been by nine years for quite a while, and I'm just thinking about, I think we all know we've gotten a lot bigger, so, you know, there's a proside, I guess, but...
Well, you make a good point, you know, it, it, it comes off looking like, well, why wouldn't we just up it, but at any point, you think, you think, and we just open the door to being sued for more money, but, I don't know.
Oh, plus, it's like, you really can't really get sued for more money than you're really responsible for, really, I mean, just because you have insurance coverage of that much, it doesn't mean they're gonna be responsible for that much, I mean, if someone, you know, usually actual damages, or, you know...
Okay, so here's my question, if you stay at bridge, because when somebody runs over, and crashes, and, you know, it has technical liability situation for us, I mean, but finally, finally, if I were to, in real world example, you know, a high dollar, uh, issue.
Well, if the crash is before somebody runs over it, I mean, or if, if, you mean if the crash before somebody runs over it, well, I mean, I guess, there's a function for the, if it's, if it's on a road system, if there's some, there was some sort of hazardous condition there, if you're aware of some hazardous condition, then you would probably be more responsible, but, yeah, I mean, if it's a time road, we're responsible for maintaining those roads, so if a crash, if somebody, if it collapses, or somebody writes it over it, then, you know, yeah, we could be potentially responsible.
Yeah.
And we could be potentially more responsible if we were aware of some sort of hazard condition, and it was ready to collapse, and we didn't do anything about it, so...
You hear that, though? Oh, if we're, if we're gonna request you to come back for more information at the next meeting, Karen, you might wanna get involved, and this is a memory search contract, I think it was last spring, Dennis, you might be able to help understand, I think it was Sioux County, uh, there was a bridge that got lost out, and two people got killed, I think one was a UPS driver, and, and I know there was some liability on the county side there, so, but, you know, even your response to bridges, there's a perfect example right there, it'd be interesting to see what, what came of that as far as the claim, I mean, good point, yeah.
Okay.
I start from the beginning, though?
Yeah, so I guess at this point, um, probably what I'll do is, uh, just make or some, uh, what it was, you know, what's high limit was, uh, due to, with other counties and areas, um, but at this point, I probably all, uh, instruct our jury to leave, you know, I think the three B M is held until February first, so I'll probably have to maintain what we have right now, if that's, and then, um, add, uh, additional insurance that we put up.
Okay, yeah, great, just one more question, if I may, this is all through the North Southern Church, you're certified, right?
Correct.
Is that who you're gonna contact as far as what other counties of our comparable size are doing? I mean, the other thing is, how are you gonna pay a ten million dollar claim?
True.
Great.
Yeah, just, I was actually planning on actually calling, depending on what's going on, already with the, the tax, I think, things, I'm really just...
Good. Sounds good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Devin? Yeah, nothing. All right. All right, well, that was quick, Karen.
Morning.
Good morning.
What are, uh, uh, I was gonna do something, okay, purchase through the state. So, uh, you...
Sounds good, how many you got still? So, can we get our hands on the license there, and see who, so we can through ground?
Well, those are the ones, the ones, but...
All right.
Uh, I'm not sure, I mean, we could just set up, and then we would have to follow the parameters of the public sale, kind of laid out in the center, so, by the way, probably get the new ones in, and then we...
Absolutely. The ticket? Yes.
So, just need a motion to say, uh, you can use the old vehicles at a public sale? That, I would make that a motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Oh, sorry, man.
Any additional discussion? Here none, that's roll call vote.
Well.
Yes.
David.
Yeah.
Barry.
Yes.
Corey.
Yes.
Steve.
Yes.
Okay, motion back.
All right, secondly, I have an application for both, uh, on night, for, for, uh, software, apparently have an investigator, lack of a better term, forensically trained, video from like, closed circuit television or DVR system, when you have security systems like that, depending on, uh, different things, resolution, they don't always show up very clear, so, best example I can give with this software overdue is if a vehicle is routed by outside of a location, you can get a partial plate, but you can't see it very well, using the software, you're able to clean the image up, possibly get that plate, get detailed things of, to be able to trend liner down, or some of the bottom, normally see, and then the software also creates a report, uh, all the links, to how it got, I think, picked up, like, using the report. So this particular software is five thousand four hundred and fifty dollars, I believe there's going to be about a thousand dollar, twelve hundred dollar licensing for it each year, uh, we're looking at doing that within our budget for a year, but the initial purchase cost, because we did not plan for, like, to, to the public safety grant committee, also talked to the committee the last time we met the person about this particular thing, at that time, they seemed more of a good idea.
This is, uh, and?
Software.
Uh...
You're saying it helps clean up the image and recognize, and you do seem like, like the machine does, all the recording?
It's not so much license, like, recognition, it gives him the ability to, so, um, some examples, he'd use similar tools, but not the exact software, taken, able to do that, where this particular software, you should be able to do those same things in a solid day, a day and a half, so, all the time.
Perfect, and, you know, we did it a year at a time, so be excited, I'm like, you know, after a year, do something else better, you can always think.
Correct.
All right, well, this is good work.
I would make a motion to have the chair, uh, request, uh, one percent.
Is there a second? Oh, sorry. Okay, any additional discussion? Here none, that's roll call vote.
David.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Corey.
Yes.
Steve.
Yes.
Well.
Yes.
Okay, motion back. And there's no, there's no, there's no, there's no...
Perfect.
Okay.
Any more, if you want, I'll ask that, yeah.
Sure. Karen, oh, sorry, Karen, please, uh... Thank you.
I have, uh, that, uh, yeah.
Is that?
I said, um, my last page, it said audit, it's, like, if you want to...
We don't have that, no?
Uh, no, I didn't have that, so, free ambulance, free, like, city. That's, that's...
That's not, I don't think it's, is that?
Uh, yeah, we're gonna do it for one year, and then they're gonna do it, um, this one only is for one year, and then after, we start five.
And the city signed up on it already, right?
Just so you know, you sent it to me on Thursday, and I made some changes to it, so I don't know if this agreement, that you've had, is that... Yeah, there are changes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I want to approve the, uh, concrete, uh, ambulance agreement, and also, chairman, sign.
Okay, a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any additional discussion? Here none, that's roll call vote.
Barry.
Yes.
Corey.
Yes.
Steve.
Yes.
Well.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Yeah, motion back.
Thank you. Good morning, um, uh, what you have before you is, um, just to give you, I, I did send you a memo about the deputism, just gonna give you briefly, it's back in two thousand and, insert, back two thousand and seven, a subdivision called Wilson Second, was, uh, flooded, on the flood, it said it was dedicating the road to the public, like, we both have, uh, two thousand thirteen, come, uh, beginning of two thousand thirteen, party was resupplied in something called home, something, and again, that flood didn't stay, and the roads were dedicated to both, but, later two thousand and thirteen, the county took it for tax fees, because there was tax code on it, and everybody was paying the tax, I believe at that time, I think owned by a homeowners association, so anyways, so the county had a title to this, these roads for a number of years, and that's because two thousand thirteen, the board originally wanted to just sort of vacate the road and then feed it back to the landowners, in order to vacate, you really have to go through a reclass, and really more complicated process, and you have to get the landowners to sign off on vacating, which I'm sure they wouldn't do that because they're roads, so anyways, uh, so I was trying, I was trying to figure out a way to, maybe get it from title to the county to somebody else, really, and so I, when I was doing some research, I thought of the dedication thing, so before you have a public, a dedication instrument that will dedicate the road to the public, as they should have been on the plaque, and also in the dedication, it says that, uh, the county doesn't need to sponsor the roads, and I talked with the festival's office, the audit's office, and the reporter's office, and may also be on board, that if you do the dedication, that the, the title or the name will be, which I'm really trying to, so, I'm gonna recommend that you do this, because it's been tax part, which, I remember we did, and just, we don't want the road, and we're not responsible for it, and then also, just as a, uh, too, when I checked public records, it sounded like they developed this plan and all this, to do any roads with the day, which sort of upgrade the road to a certain point, that there's a landowner, there's a lot owners who'd be responsible, trust responsible for the road, which, so it'll only extend to the public, have ownership of it.
Also, can we pull these up on the, on the, uh...
What roads are, yeah, you know, yeah.
So, we're taking the road, or is it worth it?
We're giving them back.
Give it, we're dedicating, uh, you know, the people there, all of them? Yeah, they're, they're, right, and they gotta take care of themselves. So...
Not to belabor, you're only, you're only into the twenty-five minutes, so, like...
All right, it's stressful, not moving.
I don't know unless you ask questions, though. Well, I think, you know, when, when that was first done, it should have been done same. The road should be, if, if, like, the county, the state, the, the, the road, and, the guy sits down in the end, and he goes, oh, this front can't, this front can't, right? I got it. Somebody, something that's, I know it's, it's really muddy, yeah, but I don't like muddy. I think that one's got a hard, that's, that's, we should have had to bring a towel. Uh-oh, she's upset.
Look at that, he's all set up, ready to rock and roll.
He didn't take any...
He's over, he's ready to go, very...
Oh, yeah, well, I did, I know, I knew.
Well, you're on, like, uh, so, so, so...
Did you go to the gas, I had to run over to the gas?
Oh, really, I'm assuming this is, over the river.
Oh, is this, uh, this is, uh, east of, uh, is that Leveford?
Yeah, and it's east of, cut block, directly east.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Oh, it's, oh, okay, all right, now we have a visual, an edition of a whole bunch of words. Thank you.
All right, what are the wishes of the board? With all of those, is, is, is all of those roads in the thick, back, toward area?
Yeah.
Just them, the red ones, or the, all the blue?
The red.
Well, if the red is, yeah, there is one. That's the one you guys...
Yeah, 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 uh, highlighted, uh, highlighted blue, yellow, whatever it is you wanna call it, is sort of closely like the whole parcel that's covered by this person, according to our G I F map.
So, is the red line including the buffer around it, and should be, uh, white, blue?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, any other questions? In this time, what, what are the wishes of the board?
I would make a motion, please, um, to have opera, the chairman to sign the dedication of the road in, uh, what was the subdivision, maybe again?
Wilson Second.
Wilson Second.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
Oh, sorry.
Any additional discussion? Here none, that's roll call vote.
Corey.
Yes.
Steve.
Yes.
Well.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Okay, motion back.
Thank you, for coming here.
Oh, whoa, I'm sure that's my question, tell me something.
Yeah, yeah, well, I know that, I mean, I, you did give, you know, that I feel that instead of, like, filling all those parcels, that we actually offered, uh, first couple of them that have, like, on the street, that's the first of the few, and they're considering that, like, I won't just hear that. All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Karen? Thank you, that ticket's not annoying at all.
Driving it up the wall. Is there a bomb? It's like, it's like, it's like, it feels like it's a bomb.
I know.
I know, it's annoying, we're almost done.
Well, I, it's same here, can I, yeah, just, sounds like they can't get some place soon enough.
Uh, first off, I handed to the chairman, a certificate, Roger Gunlockson is retiring from the board, this is his own tongue, and it does have a spot for the chairman to sign, so I'd ask to do that, he's a purser for, um, the best estimate in twenty-four years on the water board, and a similar amount of time on the annexation... He's a person for, um, the best estimate in twenty-four years on the water board and a similar amount of time on the annexation of yours, whatever, on the, or, or, he has on the certificate. That's the name of the committee.
Uh, it's, it's, Wayne County Committee for School Disagreement, Civilism, and Reorganization.
There you go.
And the Wayne County, Wayne County Wildlife.
So, have the chairman sign, I just wanted to know, it's, he spent lots of time serving, serving on the board.
Twenty-four years.
Oh, oh.
Karen, any motion to that?
No. It's just FYI, and I needed to signature. And on the position report, I'm sorry, Bo, our, we're having internet trouble and so I couldn't get the email out to you. But, uh, we have two openings, the corrections officers in the sheriff's office, and we have a resignation from a building inspector in, out in.
Okay, well, this is a one. Mr. Karen, I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, two requests. Any, there's a second?
Second.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none, that's our call, bro.
E?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Corey?
Yes.
Motion down.
Uh, just a heads up, Kevin Christiansen serves as the City of Wolfson Planning and Building Commission, one of the two delegates appointed by Wayne County. He has given up his resignation, so we are advertising a position that'll, will come to you to make a final appointment. But they do have an internal process at the city where, uh, they'll, a few people ask the planning, and the zoning commission will do sort of an interview with candidates, and then they'll go forward the names to you. So, just so you know, that's heated.
The C, is that a district or C two, is that at large or?
Yeah, it's at large, but it's supposed to be, so folks who are interested in doing that need to be living in, um, is it living or owning property, I'm not sure, but ETJ is the key. And the century code, the century code sets that up as one of the criteria, based on population.
More money, more money.
So, I have, where you.
How was, uh, the, how, how was it going trying to get the help for?
Yeah, we had most of the positions filled, she had one open for a month or so, but she took a break on hiring. Uh, they were, they had some downtime in December and October, so we, and they didn't have as much activity. And I think she's good at getting people trained, so decided to, to wait till that one spot, but we have lots of applicants during the open.
Please. Oh, anybody can come up with a session point, there's some special about a moment. Quick one.
That's a, tell me your talent.
Yeah.
I can do it, I trust you.
I have papers to sign, that'll help.
Uh, anybody else have anything you wanted to go?
Another half hour.
Yeah. These times.
Okay, is that, that?
I just wanted to let you know that Sally Rayhawk, who used to work for the school, who came to work here for the county facilities, um, and I've been having her work for me for the election. Um, January twenty-first is her last date, and so I am going to, with your permission, I talk to Helen. I'm gonna meet Sheila Collins, who took that position, and Sally's been training her, so that we have somebody that will slide right in there.
Well, congratulations to Sally, and finally, she hired her. Is, is she gonna take another job somewhere else, though?
She might have, she's gotten, hunting all the time, she might.
Yeah. Oh, congratulations, Karen. Um, okay. Any anything else?
Well, that's, uh, so.
Oh, um.
We, well, if somebody wants to bring it up.
Yeah, all right, um, I think, uh, Commissioner Montgomery made a good point prior to meeting with regards to these things.
Oh.
So, and if you don't mind sharing with, much you just mentioned to me, short, right, and a while ago.
Well, I think as everybody knows, the governor relieved the, last night, they expected yesterday, but then keep in mind, the city of Wolfson still has their own. So, until they make a decision, I guess, it's, uh, it's a goal, in my opinion.
Commissioner, and then you.
I spoke with, uh, Commissioner Semblet this morning, and they're talking that, that words that came down from the mayor, they're gonna wait till the middle of February, uh, that meeting to, to talk about it. And, you know, I guess the only, I, I guess I would like to point out is, the governor did list, list it, but he also, in the same breath, said we still recommend wearing a mask and, and, I mean, to me, with the way the numbers look, it's working. So, uh, I guess I, I'd kinda like to follow the city on that and just, uh, keep it as it is until then.
You said the middle of February.
That was what he thought, you know, that, I, I don't know if it was their, I think their first meeting, which is a week behind us, what, that's two weeks into February, there would be, they were gonna talk about it, I believe. I don't think they had a decision made of what they were gonna do, but that's what came from the mayor down to the mission.
Okay. Is there a, uh, do you wanna put anything in the form of a motion, or do you just wanna follow the city doing, and they got to split these buildings, they really didn't want it, that's why they're gonna.
I don't know, we have any choice, do it.
Yeah, right.
Suppose we could block it, but.
So, do we just stay, stay as it is, right? Is everything?
As it's supposed to, two more weeks.
They can't have it.
Okay. Right, okay.
There you go.
Oh, I thought you were gonna come and say something. Okay.
You can talk, hey.
Nothing that should be aired.
No, you can talk if you want, it's no different, I, I'm never afraid to talk. About to plug it.
I know, I'm ready to plug in. Okay, you, yeah, are we good?
Behind you.
Huh?
Behind you.
Thanks for talking, this desk was built, isn't it?
Yeah.
Okay. Hearing nothing, uh, seeing no one raising any hands, I guess we will adjourn and so we reconvene at the park board.
What time is that?
What time is that, nine thirty?
Nine thirty, yes, sir.